Let's call this regular meeting of the Virgin City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Welcome, everyone. We have a couple of amendments to the agenda. We do have visitors tonight. Michael Dooley is with us. Kathy Higgins will not be with us. We'll see Michael in a moment. Under Business, Item D, we are dropping for this evening. We are adding an Item H, which is a resolution to designate a public agency. And Item I, appointment of the city clerk. Any questions about those amendments? If not, we'll move on. Did anyone have any questions on the warrants that were circulated? In that case, we'll move on to the minutes, and we probably should address them individually. I think it might be easiest if we start with the minutes from June 11. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for June 11.
Motion made and seconded. Were there any additions, corrections, comments? I was not in attendance at that meeting, so I have no comments. Being no comments, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are accepted. Now on to the...
I'll make the motion to approve the June 18 minutes.
Great. Motion made and seconded. Any questions or comments? I have two corrections on Page 2 at the very top. Manager Chabot advised he has not adjusted wages for himself, and I would prefer it read City Clerk, Treasurer Divine, and Assistant City Clerk. As appropriate. Any other corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They are approved.
And I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for June 25.
Do we have a second? Motion made and seconded. Were there any comments or corrections? I had one. Under Proposed Fiscal Year 2020 City Budget, last line, Mayor Fritz read the statement that is filed, not filled, as part of these minutes. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved.
And I'll make a motion to approve the June 28 minutes.
Motion made and seconded. Any corrections, discussion, questions?
Yes. It says Alderman Koenig moved to withdraw his original motions to allocate the $15,000 and the $1,2,500. Those were not withdrawn. Those passed and were done. It was the original motion to accept the budget that was withdrawn.
That's correct.
So somehow that needs to be worded.
How would you like that to read?
And also Alderman Matt Koenig is probably not in attendance.
He probably isn't.
So probably Alderman Koenig moved to withdraw his amendment to the original motion of, what was it, the 18th? And the original motion made on the 18th, and Alderman Small seconded. But the two allocations from the Water Tower Fund were not touched in that removal.
So you just want to strike that last sentence?
I think strike the first sentence, because that's talking about those two allocation. So the first sentence on the third page should go, and then the... There should be... They were withdrawing the amendment to the original motion to approve the budget, and then the original motion to approve the budget made on the 18th. Those two are what got removed or withdrawn. And then we adopted the tax rate.
Does that make sense? Paul, say.
She wasn't there.
It makes it more difficult.
We can clear that up.
Yeah. We know what happened.
And also, there's also a second time where Matt is called out. Yeah.
You better change your name.
It's not the first time it's been called.
Mark's going to be Matt now? Yes.
There you go.
And the only addition I had was at the end of that next paragraph. The paragraph ending "A vote on the motion showed all voting in favor except Alderman David Austin" should also read that the mayor did not vote. Okay. Any other questions or comments or corrections? All those in favor, as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They are approved.
And finally, the... I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July 9.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting them as written, please say aye. Opposed? Approved. Moving on to our visitors. Michael Dooley, welcome.
I'm Mike Dooley, a living center director over at Northland's Job Corps. I just started at the end of July, end of June, rather. We sent out invitations to everybody. We're going to be having a Community Relations Council meeting on August 7 at noon, a luncheon. You should all get your... Get those. If you don't, you know, I'll probably be calling you next week to invite you personally. You know, I'm just here to let you know, the corporation is definitely behind making sure that we're well-integrated into the community and that we work out any issues that there may be. I met with the chief earlier today. You know, we're an educational facility, so we have the same issues as any other educational facility, you know, any college, any anything. The main thing that I really want to get out to the community, though, is that the training that we provide is good for your own community. It's good for your own kids. We just sent four kids up to Can-Am, starting at almost $20 an hour from our advanced welding trade. Our urban forestry, which does a lot of work in your town itself, those kids are getting hired at a very decent wage. We are looking... We currently have an MOU with Mount A, but we're going to be looking to meet with the principals of all the local towns. Students can be co-enrolled. They can go to high school there and take a trade in the afternoon with us. But, you know, we're here to be part of the community. So if anybody has any questions or anything, I am always available 24 hours a day. Currently, I'm living right off the Green, just down next to the retirement home. I'm renting from there. We've bought a lot of new staff in. We currently have a new residential counseling manager in charge of the dormitories, and we're just hoping that, you know, any issues that did occur in the past, that we can make sure that we handle. I've been 15 years in Job Corps. I've held almost every single position in Job Corps. This is my first time as a center director, but 16- to 24-year-old student behavior is nothing that, you know, I'm afraid of or worried about. So again, I can't say there's never going to be any more issues again, because they're 16- to 24-year-olds. But I'm here to make sure that, you know, we don't put an undue burden on your city. Does anybody have any questions for me, or things they want to direct to me, or... Because I'm open to questions if you have any.
I'm just glad that you're here.
Thank you. I'm glad I'm here, too.
We had a rough patch, but if it sounds like a...
I'm under contract on a house in New Haven, so I'm going to be moving my family up here. Mr. Green, who you met when I was looking at that other house, he's come up. He just started Monday. So, I mean, I think, I feel like everything's really going in the right direction there. Our biggest thing is just, I think it's a shame that people view the program a certain way, and they view the program as that's where bad kids go, or whatever. Our advanced welding program, we probably have the greatest welding instructor in the country. And the placements we're getting there, we went from, we are currently fourth in the country for places, for job placements and job wages. Our disciplinary separations were a bit high, but that's something that we're dealing with now. And, you know, this training is stuff that the kids in these communities hear. Right now, a third of our students are from Vermont. We just switched our OA contract to bring in more students from Vermont, and that's what I would really like to see, is a lot more local recruitment, a lot more students from, and a lot more partnerships. The Hannaford Career Center, I think, is where most of the students in these local places go for any sort of job training. If they don't offer it, and we do, I want to train your kids. And if you meet our instructors, you'll see that they are really quite excellent. Home Builders Institute, which does our building construction trades, they do an awesome job across the country in different things. So, you know, our country is short, I believe, a million people for construction trades. But welders, carpenters, trades, certified medical assistants, I mean, your own community can benefit from the place, instead of seeing it as a place where a bunch of people come from the outside and take up your town. You know, I was very... In my office, I found this binder that is about from when it was the week's school. And the place has been there since 1872. It's been a part of this community since 1872. It has loads of great speeches about former directors of the program in rather archaic language, but very amusing to read. And just, you know, I don't... Some of our instructors talk about how their parents used to threaten them with getting sent to the week's school. The welding instructor actually said that he called up his father and said, "Dad, I'm finally at the week's school." He kept saying, "I was going to go here." So, you know, just, we don't want to be seen as separate outsiders or anything like that. You know, we're here to help. We do a lot of community service. I believe we're the second-largest employer in this city. You know, we bring in about $5 million or so in wages, probably anywhere over different years that I've looked, from $750 to almost $1 million in money spent locally in local businesses. ETR, who I work for, is very big on that. They don't want to buy everything from Walmart. We're getting it at Abashans. We're getting it, you know, we're trying to source everything as locally as possible. Our own kids probably spend close to $100, $250,000 a year in this community, in the restaurants and the stores, buying, you know, whether it's soap or pizzas or whatever. So the place is a benefit, so, and I just hope anybody sees that. And if there's any problems, as I said, I'm going to be living 15 minutes away, and I'm available 24 hours a day, 7 days a week.
You realize that the chief lives in the Haven, too?
I know.
You're neighbors, is that...
Right around the corner from each other, basically, I think, so, you know, I can pick them up on the way if something happens. You won't have to drive.
You haven't seen my driveway, have you?
It's okay. You haven't seen my truck. It'll make it through. If it falls off, we're good. We're good. Okay?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on. Were there any citizens' comments on any items that are not on the agenda? I think we do have some agendas floating around, if anyone... No comments from anyone? We will move on to business. Item A, a very vague recognition.
Yes, we have a long-service member of the Development Review Board who is, has resigned their position there, and Brent Rukowski, as the DRB chair, asked if we would, the city council would please consider a recognition, a resolution of recognition for Jason Farrell, who truly, over the course of his time on the DRB, touched a great many initiatives and projects that we've accomplished here in the community. I think it's certainly appropriate, after somebody's done that amount of time and that amount of workforce, that we do officially recognize them. So Brent had actually forwarded a draft of a resolution he'd like the council to consider. Please.
So, thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you like, I can, I'd love to read that. And as Matt pointed out, you know, I think many of you know Jason, he's been a pretty consistent member of, well, he's been a very consistent member of the DRB and the Planning Commission up until, probably a year and a half ago. A few months back, Jason indicated to me that he would not be seeking reappointment to that board. I had some conversations with some other board members and City Manager Chabot, and felt that appropriate that, you know, some type of recognition be done. So as Matt pointed out, I put together a resolution with some help from others. So, the city council resolution, "An appreciation for outstanding public service by Jason Farrell. Whereas Jason Farrell was appointed to the City of Virgin's Development Review Board and Planning Commission on February 14, 2006, and whereas Jason Farrell, in his role as Planning Commission member, participated in and contributed to the rewrite of the municipal development plan adopted in September 2009, 2014, and 2017, and whereas Jason Farrell, in his role as Planning Commission member, provided valuable perspective, ideas, and contributions to the rewrite of the city's zoning and subdivision regulations, bringing them in alignment with the vision of the municipal development plan, and whereas Jason Farrell, in his recent role as Chair of the Development Review Board, presided over countless meetings, hearings, deliberative sessions, and points of order, and whereas Jason Farrell, in his role with the DRV, presided over many of the city's largest development projects. Whereas Jason Farrell has brought respect, honor, integrity to the City of Virgin's Development Review Board by leading by example, exhibiting the highest level of ethics and maintaining superior moral character, and whereas Jason Farrell volunteered numerous hours, incurred personal sacrifice, and exhibited outstanding community spirit in his service, acting as an agent of change while maintaining a demeanor that made working with him a pleasure, and whereas Jason Farrell imparted knowledge to those new members of the Development Review Board. And whereas Jason Farrell, Farrell's unwavering commitment, willingness, and ability to understand and respond to the concerns of the people of Virgin's has made a substantial contribution to the betterment of the City of Virgin's. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council thus hereby commend Jason Farrell for his time, dedication, enthusiasm, and outstanding public service given to the Virgin's community for the past 13 years." And then the last sentence there is just adoption agreed by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent.
Looking for a motion to accept this?
Moved and seconded.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Brent.
Thank you, Brent.
You're very welcome. All righty. 2020 budget.
So at our last budget session, I think it was Alderman Benton said, "This is a budget that no one is completely happy with," which makes it a good budget. Those were, those were kind of my guiding words over the last couple of weeks. So last week, I forwarded to you folks the action that had been taken after our last budget session. $50,000 was allocated from the general fund balance regarding the Water Tower Fund. $12,500 will be allocated or encumbered over the next four years for the sidewalk project from McDonough down to the basin stairs. As you might recall, we need a $50,000 match for that, that project. $72,500 for the Virgin's Police Department bond has been moved into its own light item as in general expenses. I will say that that has generated a bit more conversation about bond debt and where it should live. The DPW bonded debt and the fire department still reside within their operating budgets. I'm not suggesting an additional change at this time, but it is something that we should consider going forward. There are two schools of thought. Number one is that it should be in its parent fund just for transparency standpoint, and the other is that there are other municipalities that just keep it as a separate line item outside of operating budget. So that's just a conversation we will continue to have moving forward. Out of the watershed fund, the council has appropriated $13,500 towards the director And those were the highlights. Just make sure I got all my notes. Oh, the cameras for the Virgin's Police Department were stricken from the budget. Chief Merkel and I will continue to work down grant opportunities, including the VLCT passive, which do indicate that they do have grant money available for that use. So Chief Merkel and I just need to continue to try to find out where we can find that money from. I know we have some asset forfeiture. He's got some money set aside that we'll be able to apply to that. So we will continue to apprise the council as we move forward on that initiative. I think everybody's in agreement that this is something we'd like to get done. It's just where it's going to come from. Okay? That is where we are on the budget, folks. Everyone has the updated copy. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, comments, or concerns.
We'll figure out the $5,000 deficit with the pool.
We ran flat till last year there, so I assume that it comes out of the general fund balance at the end of the year.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Green Walker.
Thanks. Can you explain how the health cost, health insurance costs increased so greatly in one year? Do you have any...
I think it's endemic of the industrial industry right now. And anticipate no relief in the future. It's something that, you know, individuals, businesses, families are all grappling with exploding healthcare costs. And there are other opportunities, other resources that we can look at as far as different vendors. We participate in Vermont League of Cities and Towns, which negotiates the Blue Cross, Blue Shield contract for the municipalities. But there's been some dialogue, Green Walker, that, you know, maybe based on our trend in Virgin's, that we could shoot more with a BB gun than a shotgun, and we may not need as extensive coverage as we have. But again, that's going to, that's going to take some time to unpack that.
Has VLCT gotten a lot of pushback on that increase? Have you talked to the managers?
Yes.
I'm sure you have, or have heard about it, but it's, it can't, it can't just continue that way. They've got to do something.
I agree that it cannot continue that way. I mean, if we face another 15% increase next year, you know, I'm not sure how we're going to get out of that. There is significant pressure on VLCT, but like many things that negatively impact smaller municipalities, they're looking at it from 10,000 feet, Bill. And I think until people start finding their own alternatives and not going back to them as a resource, I think that's when we can anticipate actual change taking place. And that's something that, you know, again, through the budget sessions, you know, I think that's become clear, that that's something we need to review in the next year.
The school board ran into the exact same problem. Healthcare went up 13.5% across the board for all teachers and staff, and we had to figure out how to deal with that.
So can I just clarify, is there a difference between healthcare costs and health insurance costs? Are these expenses, are these increases all health insurance?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess my question is, do we have any idea why health insurance costs are increasing so greatly? Is this because Obamacare, which is inappropriately, I guess, a patient-affordable care, is it because it came into effect, is it because it came into effect and did not have the intended effect? Is it because the Congress has taken action? Is it because the Trump administration threw executive order? Any idea why?
All of the above.
All of the above.
And Blue Cross Blue Shield is a private insurance company, and they're out to make a profit. They have shareholders. And if they can raise the rates, they can raise the rates.
And they're asking, they're planning on asking for another 11 or 12% increase.
You can trace the beginnings of the problem in Vermont to the Dean administration and created a deal that essentially propped up Blue Cross Blue Shield and created a situation where they were basically the only insurer left in the state, reason being they insured state employees. That was the beginning of the end, as far as Vermont.
This hasn't really germinated in the Congress.
No. We aren't either. So we are going to solve this problem here tonight.
So what's the right way to do that? Should we have a breakout session, or is it just up to a citizens' initiative to have, like, a focus group talking about this further? I guess, I mean, I guess the one question is, maybe, relevant to you all, is what is the alternative for using a fair market to bring down the price of a product we demand? Is there any...
Well, as I said earlier, throughout the course of the budget work sessions, several different options became evident that we will run down over the course of the next year.
Okay, so it takes, it just takes a long time to...
Absolutely. I mean, absolutely.
Got to go shopping and compare and contrast and see what's there. So, yeah, but it's a...
Okay.
Matt is on it, though.
Okay, so I mean, in other words, as a citizen, and not particularly informed, but I don't want to weigh down the time with ignorance on my part, but how is it, I mean, are you comfortable with the timeline of discovering that massive increase in expenses and the timeline that's required to sort of respond and react to that?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but it might be appropriate for you to stop by the office for, we could have this, I mean, it's a very rhetorical conversation, Green Walker, that has nothing to do with the topic on hand. I mean, this is, it's kind of in the rearview mirror at this point, for lack of a better phrase, and what we're going to do is look to see what options we have for the 2021 budget.
All right. Very well. Our charter is absolutely silent on the budget, so we need not take any further action. So unless anyone has any other comments for the manager, we will move forward.
One quick question, of course. For the purpose of the auditors, do you, it doesn't have to be... What would the, what would the auditors be expecting when they look at the 92 cents and no real, I mean, no approval of a budget? So what is that going to hap, what happens?
They, so again, the charter requires the city council to set the tax rate, which we, which you did at 92 cents. The budget has to true up, square up to that 92 cents, which it does. That's what the auditors are going to look to.
Okay, that's what I'm looking at.
Right.
Okay. Got it.
It's kind of backwards, but...
It is kind of backwards, but, yep, it is.
Okay.
All right. Moving on.
So just before we move on, I thank the council for your guidance and patience through this project process, and I have already started on the 2021 budget, so.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
I appreciate the compromises everybody made. I really do.
Yeah, I know you do.
All right. Moving on. Nomination to the Addison County Regional Planning Commission.
So we have an alternate position available, and with the support of the Virgin's Planning Commission, Tim Cook is suggested as that alternate.
Has he agreed?
Yeah, yes. Yes, he has. Yep.
Or he's in vacation, so he's just going to be appointed.
We suggested him, we'll tell him later.
If I could add, just real quickly, yes, he's agreed. There's a housing subcommittee that he's very anxious to be a member of, but you can only be on if you're a delegate or an alternate. So the city's really going to benefit from anything that he learns through being a part of that. So he was, he was very excited to do this.
Thank you, Sharon.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yep.
You?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Tim Cook's appointment as alternate, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the South Water Street Block Party.
I can step away from here, um, a citizen for a moment.
Thank you.
I have Mark. I live on South Water, so you're doing our annual block party.
Don't even come back in the door.
So we're just going to block off, again, like we always do, from Roberts on Water Street up until Victory slash Water and South Maple, so no one drives over us. Probably the part of the last two hours, we'll block it off. We'll probably, I think it says 4 to 8. So somewhere in there, we'll just clear a little stop horses. We'll probably, I think it says 48, so somewhere in there, we'll just clear little sawhorses. We'll let the bars know that they can't get through, except that they can because there's little sawhorses that, and that's it.
Great. How many years has this been going on?
Since our fourth or fifth.
Okay.
Excellent.
I don't live in South.
We are closing off the streets.
We do, yeah.
It's South Water, but everybody comes, so there's people from all over. So if you want to drop by, drop by.
Great. So we need a motion to authorize closure of the street for the event. Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No abstain?
No abstention. Moving on to the recommended fee schedule from the Virgin's Police Department.
So again, another topic that came out of our budget work sessions was, you know, how do we seek remuneration for our Virgin's Police Department for services provided outside of the community? Chief Merkel, this week, provided me with this draft fee recommendation. So this is open for discussion amongst us in the council.
Any questions regarding it?
Are these, do other communities do this? Are these costs or fees relatively similar to other departments you're aware of?
They are. I called Middlebury and I called Brandon, and I boused my ideas off from them, and that's basically the way it is. Ultimately, we have the right to make a decision on what we charge for fees. There is a, Secretary of State's Office has a guideline, but these are what our local departments are charging. And I just want to make it clear that I think one of the entries I made, or one of the suggestions I made, doesn't really delineate between resident and non-resident. And obviously, those costs do not apply to the resident, i.e. for fingerprinting. So, or bin verifications.
Chief, I did receive a comment that regarding police officer crews of services, that overtime rate or overtime plus 10% may not be high enough to cover, you know, the overall cost of providing those services.
And you know, that's a starting point, just an idea, but again, we don't have a set fee schedule. Some departments have a set overtime rate, and that's it. And this obviously will vary depending on what an officer's rate of pay is. I obviously come at a higher price tag than maybe Cassidy Terabash, so you get who's available. I think it may be prudent for the city to set an overtime rate high enough that we're not losing money, we shouldn't be losing money when we do this. And we can discuss that if you want. If you want it made a higher, we can certainly do that.
To that point, somebody, the individual spoke to me about it, said, you know, it should be a flat rate. It shouldn't matter. You know, it should all go out at Chief Merkel's rate.
That's fine.
So I know you're headed out. Maybe when I get back from vacation, we could further.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, it's not going to be approved tonight.
Nope.
Okay. I think we ought to just continue to discuss it, and then we'll agree on.
Yeah. So why don't we meet prior to the 13th, and we'll come back with some refined recommendations?
That'll work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll continue that discussion. Moving on to adoption of town bridges and road standards.
So this is an annual report that the city is required to have signed, adopted by the city council. I apologize. And it's really, just details our hydraulically connected road segments, detailed municipal road standards, yes. Class 4 road standards, yes. This just really details where our inventory is at, and some specifics as to how our road construction standards are as well. Again, this is an annual sign-off for the council.
We just need our signature?
Please and thank you.
Well, that's going around, Mr. Mayor, do you want to move on to?
Go right ahead. City manager's report. Thank you. So just FYI, tax bills went out yesterday. The school tax rate has come in 11 cents, and Alderman Coning, looking in his crystal ball, doesn't give me a lot of faith that that's going to improve with the 2021 budget. So just FYI, that, you know, we continue to have impacts beyond the decisions that are made at this table. So that's just FYI to everyone. Item B and C need to remain on the agenda until such time as these positions are filled, but I have heard that we have a potential individual who's interested in the Lister position. I'm hoping to bring that name forward on the 13th of August. This, I'm sorry.
We skipped the H and I.
We've skipped. We'll come back to them.
How did I do that? No?
You just continued on instead of what you added on.
Yeah.
Yeah, but those are H, so we're going to go through the H and I.
I thought it was H. No. I'm sorry.
I thought they were, I figured.
Yeah, I went about there too.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can.
Yeah, that's okay.
We'll just fold it into mine, that's fine. And then the open development review board position as well, we do have a candidate. And again, I'll be bringing that nomination forward on the 13th as well. It's come to my attention that there is a boating infrastructure grant, the BIG grant, which is funded through the Fish and Wildlife Services, up to $200,000 with a $50,000 match. We are a prime candidate because of our transient marina that we service, that we offer to boaters. In speaking with Fish and Wildlife Services, they are very optimistic and are hoping that the council will approve my request to pursue that grant opportunity.
4-1 match?
Yep.
$200,000 and $50,000?
Yep.
Wow, okay. What's the timing?
That I don't know. The conversation started at the end of last week, and then the representative went on vacation. I'm on vacation next week, so we're going to recoup when I come back.
Is there a deadline that you know of?
Nope.
Okay.
Is there a focus of what we have to spend the money on, or is it just something to do with boating water?
It's funny, because former Mayor Perry had discussed the Northern Borders Grant opportunity, and a lot of it's very similar, where they're looking for local job growth, which, you know, Doc Doctors, if we chose them as a vendor, would be an outstanding symmetry for us. It's really improving the overall amenities. And, you know, I've spoken with a lot of boaters this summer. We are short on power. Electricity is an issue down at the basin. You know, we're not offering, you know, shower or restroom services. I really, Mark, feel that if we could continue or start to build on the infrastructure, we could get to a point where we could start to charge for our transient boaters that spend time in the basin with us.
Nice to know there was a focus on what basin.
No, I think, again, it's, you know, we would just, I think we need new docks. I think we're getting by, but I think we could do an improvement there. Jim Larro, DPW supervisor, would really like to improve the wall on the opposite sides and not on the McDonough side, but there's that steel sheathing wall. And, you know, I said, you know, I want to do something sexy, Jim. I don't want to have this, you know, metal wall that's underwater and no one sees it. But he's pretty adamant that that wall is failing and it needs to be replaced. So it may come down to we would have.
I don't think that's a quarter million dollar repair.
I don't think so either. But, you know, that may be something that would have to be considered first before we got into any additional amenities. But again, not to get too far off, but speaking with a boater last night, you know, he was like, a buck a foot is a reasonable charge for anybody operating the services that you're providing. So it's always come down to who would be responsible to, you know, to get that money. But I think we could move that forward.
Okay.
Okay. It was also suggested that we have a camera placed somewhere in the basin that would show the docks so that if boaters are out on Lake Champlain, they could log in and see if there were available spots prior to coming up the lake.
That's been discussed before.
Yeah.
It's a good idea. I don't know why it never got to fruition, but.
Yep. So, assuming I have permission from the council to pursue that grant opportunity. Thank you. Tax sale update, we are no, we are not, we are no longer in the mobile home business. The city had executed a tax sale last August.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fritz at the time, and Mayor, former Mayor, manager Holly, executed, Delinked Tax Collector Holly executed the sale. The individuals came in on deadline and paid off their tax debt. So they retained their property, and we are out of that business, which is not a bad thing. And it was a nice little bump in the revenue at the end of the year. Just FYI, Franz Collis, many years, has done tennis camp over at the, at our municipal tennis courts. He is doing classes both this week and next week as well, so that's an FYI. I have a thank you to Dyke Ackland. Dyke Ackland is a relatively new resident here in Virgin's. He's living at the Virgin's Residential Care Facility off the Green and has undertaken weeding of some of our, of the city green and the beds in front of City Hall as well. I think if he weren't on a cane, he would be taking on the basin. Dyke is just really passionate about assisting the community, and I just want to take an opportunity to thank him publicly for assisting us. It's, and to Jim and the rest of the DPW crew, I think the green just really looks outstanding. So thanks to everybody involved on that. So thank you.
Could you write him a little note?
I would be happy to do so on behalf of the council.
So if I see someone out there doing it, it's probably him?
Yes.
Okay. Go say hi to him to thank him.
Please do. Okay, great. I think you guys were right. This was actually up in business, but thank you. So resolution to designate a public agency. The Addison County Community Trust and Housing of Vermont are being designated as the program managers for the Armory Lane Senior Housing Project, and they just need this Form PM4 signed off on designating them as the program managers.
Stand by all of us?
All of you, please.
Does that mean they grab the funding?
We think so.
They, they're talking about shovels in the dirt this fall. I thought, Lynn, that they were short.
That's what it sounded like.
But it may be something, you know, as they start to get leverage, you know, and start to get commitments, other people start to, you know, funnel in and start to participate as well.
Once they know that it's reached a certain threshold, yeah.
It's actually going to happen. Very well may be what's happened here. Last order of business I have is appointment of city clerk. Clerk Divine is on vacation this week, but I think when she comes back, she'd like to know that we've kept her on as our city clerk.
That's a good idea.
She's my, we didn't actually.
Should we not?
Some formal what?
Some formal election.
I think not.
Okay.
Thank you, anyway.
Great.
Yes.
General supervisor, you as well have to be appointed without that contract, that the council has to appoint you as well.
Okay. I'm going to tee that up for August 13th, because I don't have any documentation supporting that request. Thank you.
Anything else from you?
That's it for me.
That's a charter.
It is a charter.
It is. Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, Clerk Divine did tip me off to the treasurer, but failed to, just didn't remind me of the others, so we'll get that done, no problem. I wasn't sure how tonight was going to go, so I was ready to be appointed again. I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
All right, very, good, I'm glad you are. Item seven is the mayor's report. I just have two things that I'd like to report on. The first is, I've been talking with a couple of people who I would like to appoint to a mayoral committee to delve into the issue of succession planning. It's one item that we have discussed with our city clerk, as we assume that we will have an imminent vacancy there at some time. And also, we have, we have no policy or procedure in place, as we learned when Manager Holly left, to actually have a succession plan. So this would be a committee that would provide us with the tools to make this happen. And hopefully, by August 13th, that committee will be formed, and I can let you all know then. And the second issue is the local option tax committee. I believe that Manager Chabot and I will be meeting with the partnership to discuss forming this committee and what it means. It will involve asking a lot of questions, surveying local businesses, and making sure that we have all of our ducks in a row as we proceed. That was all that I have.
That's the reason to your process.
Beg pardon?
So it's not going to happen?
Oh, that's right. Thank you very much. The other, the other item, thank you for reminding me, is we have a meeting in Panton this coming Monday to discuss the VEC. We're meeting with their DRB, their select board, and presumably members of the public to answer questions. It's been very friendly so far. It was a friendly invitation, so we will be there. And we've offered to be there, and so we will. I think that was it.
That was it.
That was it. All right. Which leads us to item eight, our executive session. I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session in compliance with Section 1 VSA, paragraph 313, evaluation of a public officer or employee.
Someone made a motion.
Motion made.
Next.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. We will enter executive session. All right, now we're looking for a motion.
I would move to accept Manager Chabot's budget of increasing the city clerk's salary by 2.91%.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
Motion to a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.